Wow, what a quiet group you are. I wonder how that happened so quickly? Just kidding. Okay. With that, I'm going to open our public hearing. And first, I want to announce that we are live captioning our meetings. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open up a webpage with the live captioning. For the public hearing, I'm also going to call to order our meeting and then roll call. So I now would like to call to order the public hearing of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of June 27, 2023. For the record, again, roll call vote of the board members. I'm going to start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Butler is in San Diego anticipating the return of her son from deployment on the Nimitz, so she's not with us this evening. Ms. Davis.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Norini.
I'm here.
Yay. Como esta?
Buen dia.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Thor.
Here.
Thank you. And with my presence, we have six board members present and our student trustee. Thank you. Moving on, then, we are here to take and read public comments regarding the proposed budgets for Gateway Early College High School fiscal year 2023 through '24 and Phoenix College Prep Academy fiscal year 2324. Both administrators are here with us this evening, Mr. Stacy Boyd, Principal of Gateway Early College High School, and Mr. Wilbert Nelson, Acting Principal and Dean, Vice President of Academic Affairs at Phoenix College, and filling in, obviously. So, Ms. Macias, do we have any public comments this evening regarding this hearing? Board members, do you have any comments? With that, then, this concludes the public hearing of our meeting. We will continue to our regular meeting with this same link. And so I'd like to note that this meeting has adjourned at 6:38 PM. Thank you. So now, moving on, again, we note that we're live captioning our meetings, and we've gone through that. And this time, I call to order the regular meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for June 27, 2023. And again, once, for the, again, for the record, I'm now going to call roll of board members. Mr. Burnett, our student trustee.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Butler is absent. Ms. Davis.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Norini.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor.
Present.
And with my presence, we again, six board members present and our student trustee. We're now moving to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I've invited Dr. Kate Smith to lead us in the pledge. Please all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smith. We have a number of substitutions this evening, and I'm going to read those off. If I mispronounce your name, I apologize. From Chandler Gilbert Community College, we have Dr. Deborah Hardy, Vice President of Academic Affairs. She's in, sitting in for Dr. Greg Peterson. Paradise Valley Community College, we have Mr. Herman Gonzalez, Vice President of Administrative Services, for Dr. Hunter. Mesa Community College, we have Mr. Michael Voss, Dean Career Tech Pro for Dr. Tammy Robinson in Mesa. Gateway Community College, we have Dr. Jim Moore, sitting in for Dr. Amy Diaz. Australia Mountain, we have Dr. Patty Cardenas Adame for Dr. Ray Rivera. For Legal, we have Ms. Janice Falkenberg, our General Counsel, who is with us virtually, I believe. Ms. Falkenberg, are you present with us this evening?
I am here, Mrs. Sullivan. Thank you.
Thank you. Delighted that you're here. Any other substitutions that, Dr. Gonzalez, that I need to make note of for the record? Being done, we do not have any student life reports this evening, but we do have Faculty Executive Council report from Dr. Lee Sanmarcio. And I did tell her she could not speak French because I wouldn't be able to respond quickly enough this evening. Pas mal, pas mal.
On, there we go. Madame la présidente, membre du conseil administration, chancellor, CEC colleagues and guests, jumbo. Madame la présidente, I know you are fond of songs as themes for presentations, so I chose "Summer Breeze" by Seals &amp; Crofts, as I remember it fondly from my childhood. A more appropriate choice, however...
Très bien.
Très bien?
Yes.
A more appropriate choice, however, might have been Alice Cooper's "School's Out for Summer." This song in particular brings images to mind of classroom doors flung open, masses of excited students pouring out, and trailing behind an exhausted faculty body. Faculty who many believe will take the next few weeks off, retiring perhaps to a villa in the south of France to wander among the lavender fields. While this may be true for some, and I express no hate, but perhaps a bit of envy, I'd like to tell you about the work of many Maricopa faculty who will spend their summertime engaged with teaching and learning. For example, Maricopa Community Colleges is offering 4,770 summer courses across the 10 colleges. Would it surprise you to know that 58% of those classes are taught by residential faculty, faculty who have chosen to remain connected to the classroom during the summer months? Others are remaining connected to the classroom but taking those classrooms to international locations. This summer, we have six international programs in both Europe and Mexico. For example, 35 students are currently in Ireland with Dr. Barry Vaughan of Mesa Community College, where they will spend a month embedded in the local culture. Not only will they immerse themselves in the study of Irish religion from the Neolithic to medieval times, they learn the art of Irish storytelling and regale the locals with their final projects at the neighborhood pub. Many students have been so impacted by their experiences that they have chosen to return to this area to further their studies. Now, spending a month in Europe may sound like a vacation, but I can assure you that it is hard work wrangling a group of college students. I speak for experience as one of those former students who, many years ago, along with some co-conspirators, almost got our group kicked out of a hotel in Rome for using the bed sheets as togas. Who knew that wasn't appropriate? Did you know? No, I didn't know. But the opportunity for students to experience different cultures, values, and perspectives firsthand challenges their perceived or preconceived notions and broadens their worldview. It fosters empathy, tolerance, and an appreciation for diversity, making them more open-minded individuals. And that, Ms. Ami, is incredibly valuable in this increasingly divisive world we live in. Other faculty are engaging in the field of pedagogy over the summer at Scottsdale Community College. 12 faculty are collaborating during a summer service learning institute to develop field of interest-specific experiences. One, led by the Director of the Hospitality Program, is working on putting together a Human Trafficking Awareness Week at S E C. Arizona is a major hub for human trafficking, and victims are often trafficked through hotels. While the project is very early in its development, the core idea is that her hospitality students will create an advocacy campaign, host speakers, and offer some training on what to look for. The Director is involving experts at the city and state level, as well as leveraging her numerous contacts in the hospitality industry. The district-wide Maricopa Summer Institute brings teams of faculty, often cross-college, together to develop and deploy projects in the classroom. This past May, the Institute highlighted the work of 10 teams. One that was particularly intriguing was an attempt to encourage student buy-in for math. Math is often considered a necessary evil to obtain a certificate or a degree, but its applicability beyond that is often questioned. To address this, students are asked to interview professionals in their specific field of study, and a panel of professionals was filmed talking about what math looks like in future career choices. Other summer institute groups are looking at the ethical use of generative AI in both English and psychology classrooms. These highlights are not meant to diminish those residential faculty who choose to spend their summers disconnecting, but rather to celebrate those who remain connected with teaching and learning. Irrespective of where or how the faculty spend their summers, I can assure you that they will return on August 11th refreshed, reinvigorated, and renewed of purpose. I will close with a haiku on summer teaching. Golden rays embrace; knowledge blooms with each warm day; summer's lessons shared.
Thank you. And when you were talking about Ireland, I just wanted you to note my last name. There's many a pub called... Yeah, now you have to start speaking in Gaelic. Just thought I'd throw that out. From there, we're moving to the Adjunct Faculty Association report, Mr. Paul Frank Weack.
Frank Kovik.
That's French.
Right.
So please, proceed with your report, and delighted to have you with us this evening.
Thank you so much, Chairperson Sullivan, board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, distinguished educators. Thank you so much for having me. This is going to be my last presentation before the board, and, you know, the past, like, nine of them have been kind of glad-handed, you know, because that's like sort of a dog and pony show. He's just saying thank you to everybody and pointing out initiatives and stuff. And I figured since we've been nipping around the edges this whole year, I would present you this last time with an actual dog and pony show that will entertain the clients and perhaps say a little something about how adjunct faculty is doing within the district. So unfortunately, I had to start out with a dog. Back to still a little tough for us, you know? It still stings. My predecessor left angry. I'm just leaving a little bit hurt, you know? It could be better. We not only were separated, but we were a little diminished, and I hope that in the future, we will gain a little bit more status than that. It's not at zero, but it would be nice if we were in the nice room again and talking to the decision-makers. That would be helpful rather than working on a pedantic handbook. So that's a dog. All right, just a dog. The good news is, pony. The tier system is going great. We just finally, at the end of the year, got that it's extra and not just something that, like, is like a cost of living that's just coming with you, but it's something that the district is providing extra for the folks. So that messaging going along throughout adjunct faculty is really, really good, and I think people are really appreciating that for what it is. I think it was underappreciated before. I think now we're moving in the right direction. So pony, for sure, on that one. The dog part of that, the dog part of that is that more stuff should count towards tier advancement, and our contracts should be longer. If we're going to be putting a bunch of professional development into folks and making an investment in their, in their time and in the people, there ought to be some way we can make the contracting a little bit better, if there's any no-cost options for adjunct faculty. I think, I think that would be wonderful. I know some other districts around the nation are taking steps to look into how they can do that a little better. It'd be great if Maricopa, as a leader in education, also led on that issue too. So that's just another dog. The great thing, another pony, is that we are included in hiring committees and district leadership meetings. That's going great, you know? So that, we were talking about $200 pants the other, the other day, and that's just excellent. Being included in that is a true step towards shared governance, and I want to make sure I make special note of that. So pony on that one, for sure. The final dog is that the adjunct officers need to make more money. You're stretched a little thin, you know? If you look at the adjunct faculty rate, put in the hours that you generally, over this past year, are doing, either preparing for a meeting or presenting, it gives you about six hours, give or take, per month to do other things besides that. So that, just if you're looking at that in an hourly rate, that would be something maybe to consider, I have to say. More money for the guys that are coming, that would be very, very helpful. You get what you pay for, and this past year's been fantastic. So thank you. Thank you on that one. Then, I have to say, not a pony, but a unicorn, because I just simply cannot believe how helpful the college presidents and the Human Resources Department have been. It's just unbelievable. I mean, you know, I've mentioned all of them, I think, you know, over the course of the time. I know I've mentioned Dr. Kelly and Chandler a couple of times, and it's just been unbelievable, the support we've received from them. So that's just fantastic. So thank you. Unicorn on that one. Then, we actually have five ponies and only three dogs, so it's pretty good. It's pretty good. The other pony is direct messaging to the board. I really appreciate you giving me this opportunity to kind of dance on the altar here a little bit and say thank you for being able to address the board directly with our concerns. I think that's very important. So thank you for that one. I'm being a little flippant today on my last time, but I do appreciate the gravity of addressing this board in this forum and the time that you're offering us to dress, to address you directly. So thank you very much for that one. Pony for each of you guys, for sure. And the last one. Your most solid pony, say this at the end of every message that I have, that I presented to you as President of the Association. You have a large and deeply talented workforce with proven dedication to your mission in your adjunct faculty representatives. Please use this resource to benefit the people of Maricopa County. We're there. We support the mission. We've already proven our dedication in a number of ways to the organization. Please consider involving us more in the operations of the district. And thanks a lot, you guys. Have a good day.
I'm curious where you found all the fun dogs and ponies?
Goodwill.
Ah.
I went to, like, three stores today.
Oh, my.
I got a bunch of other stuff, too.
They're very cute. I was just thinking of which one I would want for my granddaughter. Anyway, kidding. You know, I know that we sit here, and to some people, we appear formidable, but thank you very much for recognizing us, and it's always been a pleasure to have you come to the podium. We do appreciate the information you share, and we know that your successor, who is, by the way...
Kim Boog. She'll be taking over in August.
Oh, there you are. Please stand up again, so we can recognize you. We'll look forward to hearing from you as well, and appreciate, again, the hard work that you contribute and the reports that you present to us. Think on behalf of the board, I can say that in all honesty. So thank you, President Sullivan, and good luck. Have a great summer. I'm sorry.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
What's going on with goose eggs?
You know, I actually failed miserably at hatching the eggs, but I went back and gave the guy my sob story, and I have two fabulous geese right now. So they're French geese. I named one after a French explorer Cadillac. He was one of the guys, and so they're doing great. They're really big, and they're, they're flapping at the nine-week level, and it's just going great. So thanks.
Thank you. Take good care of those animals.
What?
Including the ducks.
Oh, right.
Thank you again. Have a great summer.
Thanks. You, too.
Thank you. We'll move from there to our staff representation update, and I see that we have Mr. DeVal with us, and you're going to introduce the others. So please, we're ready for your report.
President Sullivan, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, president, C E C, guest. My name is Calvin DeVal. I'm co-president of staff representation. The other co-president, Shannon Maji, is unable to be here today as her son is playing in the All-Star Game, and she is unable to make it. I have with me this evening our vice president of two years, who is ending his term in two days, Josh Moss, and our incoming co-president, April Rowland. Next slide. Now, when Shannon was told that her son made the All-Star Game, she wasn't able to make it. She was crushed, and she said, "I'm not going to show." I said, "I don't believe you. Let me see the All-Star Game roster," and it's, it's real. So he has, he has two hits right now, doing great. But she did make a video, because she wanted to say thank you, and I can't control her. So she made a video. But she, she really enjoyed her time. She did three years, and so she really wanted to say thank you to everyone. So, Jordan, please.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of C E C and guests, I'm sorry that I could not be at tonight's board meeting in person. I am a mom first, and my son tonight plays in the All-Star baseball game. Let's hope for a W. As most of you know, I've been in many roles from E G O C through staff representation since July of 2019, and I did not want to miss an opportunity to thank a few people who have been important not only in my journey, but in the growth of staff representation. Get comfortable. Here we go. I first want to thank my husband and my three kids for their support over the years. This very important work has rolled into late nights, weekends, countless hours on my computer, on my phone, and many hours away from home. Without their support and encouragement, there was no way I could do this work. They know it's important for my career in Maricopa, but more importantly, for all staff across the district. I love you guys. What started me on my growth journey in Maricopa is in 2018 when Dr. Eric Lashinsky recommended that I sign up and experience the Women's Mentor Program. I will give you all a minute to decide if you would like to blame him or thank him for sending me on my growth journey in Maricopa, because after the experience that I had in the Women's Mentor Program, I reached out to a colleague, Lori Espinoza, and said, "The Women's Mentor Program was fun. I enjoyed that. I think E G O C will be just as fun." I had no idea what I was getting myself into, but without the encouragement of Dr. Lashinsky and Lori Espinoza, I never would be where I am today. Thank you both very much. I would like to thank the executive leadership members that I have met over the years, as well as President's Counsel. Thank you very much for opening your spaces to staff representation over the years. We have learned so much from one another. We have come so far in shared governance and collaboration. Do not lose that momentum. We have much more work to do for our staff and for our students, and we can do it together. There are two faculty that I really would like to thank. Sasha Radisich, you are truly a prime example of showing care and using collaboration for all employee groups. You never made staff representation feel inferior or less than. You treated us as colleagues and respected us as equals. It was never about power over one another. It was about collegiality. You were a mentor, and I learned so much from you that I continue to use it within staff representation, and I will continue to use it as I transition back to my college position. Paul Frankowiac, thank you for being open to bridging the relationship between adjunct faculty and staff representation. You have always been open to collaboration. We have come up with some great ideas for both our groups. I look forward to seeing that relationship between our two groups continue to grow. Thank you both. Dr. Georgia Kelly, staff representation would not be what it is today without your support and your championing. Thank you for your open-door policy with staff representation. You would never turn us away when we needed guidance, help with a situation, support, or when it was time to celebrate. We have done amazing work over the years. You helped build, helped us build a relationship with HR leadership across the district, and that is allowed for impactful discussion among colleagues that just want to make Maricopa the best place to work. You know that the overall well-being of employees impacts our service to our students, and having you alongside staff representation will set us on the right path. Thank you. Chancellor Gonzalez, you are the mentor I never thought I would have and the one that I didn't know I needed. You provided guidance, wisdom, the space to make mistakes, the space to ask questions, and the opportunity to grow. Now, think about this for a minute. I will forever hear those words of wisdom in the back of my mind as I grow in Maricopa. Taking the time to think about the topic or the action has been something that I have learned is of utmost importance to becoming a strong leader in Maricopa. Maricopa will succeed with you as our chancellor. Thank you. Dr. Doug Berry and Dr. Sandra Hinskey, you have given me professional growth opportunities throughout my career in Maricopa. For example, I presented on Purpose Day in March with Dr. Doug Berry. It was a wonderful experience, and I'm forever grateful for Dr. Berry reaching out to me to collaborate with him. You both have given me a work-life balance that one only dreams of. During my time from E G O C to staff representation, my husband deployed overseas. We went through COVID, the IT shutdown, and we had a major death in our family that impacted me greatly. Both of you offered support to not only me, but to my husband and my kids, and we got through it together. Your unwavering support of my many roles in staff representation as co-president, I can't find the words to express how grateful I am for you both. You trusted my capability to do my job at Paradise Valley successfully while fulfilling my co-president duties, and you didn't try to figure out my secret, how I divvied everything within the limited hours of the day. It is your type of leadership that makes Maricopa a great place to work. I'm grateful to you both. Anna Chandler, Calvin DeVal, Josh Moss, April Rowland, and Nadine Sellers, whether you know it or not, you all have been mentors to me in your own way. I am only good at what I do because of you. I will carry with me everything that I've learned from you all, and I will continue to grow as a professional in Maricopa, and I will continue to help make Maricopa what I know it can become. Thank you for all you have done and continue to do for our staff, and especially for our students. To the governing board, thank you for your support of staff representation over the years. You have helped to grow a collaborative relationship with all representatives. You learn from us, we learn from you. This type of collaboration will continue to benefit our staff and our students. Thank you. To all staff representatives who have served in one capacity or another since E G O C started in July of 2019, your work has been important. You are the reason staff representation is what it is today. You built the foundation, and you kept the momentum going. To the new representatives who will be starting on July 1, I cannot wait to see the great work that you are going to do for Maricopa's staff that will impact our students' success. Thank you all for serving and volunteering to serve. To all staff across Maricopa, I hope you have seen the positive impact of the hard-working staff representatives over the past few years. Continue to stay engaged with your representatives at your local campus and the district office, or reach out to your co-presidents anytime that you have an idea on how we can make Maricopa the best place to work. Staff representation is here for you. Staff representation is here for all staff across Maricopa. For the last time, I will now turn the presentation over to my colleague, Calvin DeVal and April Rowland. Thank you, everyone.
We can clap. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Well, little did you know that I'm actually following up. President Sullivan, board, my name is Josh Moss, and as Calvin said, I am the outgoing Vice President of Staff Representation for a solid three days and a few hours. So I appreciate you guys having me here today. As per tradition, we have representative highlights of our final campus of the year. We shout out to Chandler Gilbert Community College today. Tammy, Michael, and Mark, a special shout out to Tammy, who has also been here since the E G O C days and has helped us build everything that you see before you. Next slide, please. A special thank you to all of our outgoing senators and representatives. I'm not going to repeat all of them. I appreciate Shannon's brief address, but with that, there's a list of the names that will be leaving us for at least one year. Next slide, please. And now, an even bigger welcome to our new representatives and our new senators joining us for the 23-24 term. We are excited to have a long list of names here, and we are excited to see staff representation grow as big as it is. Next slide, please. The most special slide of the evening, though, is one that I'm extremely proud of. I'd like to take a moment to tell you a little bit about April. Staff representation recently hosted an internal election, as we always do, and this was for our next co-president to join Calvin in Shannon's place. The election resulted in selecting candidate April Rowland, who is a non-exempt employee from Mesa Community College and has been a part of staff representation for two years. I'd like to introduce to you all April.
Good evening, President Sullivan and board members. My name is April Rowland, the next co-president, and I'm very happy to be here tonight. Going over, next slide, please. Our co-president's success for the year. So we strengthened relationship with the executive councils and committees this last year, and we look forward to doing that in this last year, and we look forward to doing that in the upcoming year as well. Next slide, please. Staff representation success. So we had some great successes. There's a lot listed there, but the two main ones is we have now two full-time co-president positions available within our staff representation, as well as one full-time vice president. Next slide, please. And our continuity committee. We have two approved co-presidents. We've also have the eligibility of the vice president and a lot of different things coming with the continuity committee. Next slide, please. Okay, so communications committee. We had a lot of new things collaborate this year with our communication, our newsletter that came out. We had our adjunct corner. We worked with our adjunct president, and now they have a corner within our newsletter. And we've also are featuring the Maricopa Affinity Resource Groups, MARCH, which bring awareness to all staff members. Next slide, please. We had several brown bag lunch ideas through the district office that happened just about monthly through 2022 and 2023. Next slide, please. DEI successes. We had many successes, but a couple that I want to highlight is we had the Juneteenth holiday added for this academic calendar year and the preferred name change process and protocol implemented at HCM. Next slide, please. And this month, we want to let you all know that it is Pride Month, and there is different things going on throughout our different campuses here. I'm turning it over to Calvin DeVal.
Yes, I'm just doing it all.
It's a burden.
No, this final slide is special to us, and we're going to keep it brief. But we want to extend our special gratitude and thank you to Shannon Manji. She's been a pivotal leader at Paradise Valley. She's been a pivotal leader throughout the district through staff representation. The crafting, the learning, the listening, the leading. She says that we were her mentors, but she was just as much ours. We are excited for her to get more time back with her family and some creative opportunities throughout the district in these coming years. So we just wanted to extend this very special thank you to her as well, and we look forward to seeing you all next year.
Thank you very much. It's hard to believe it's next year, which you really mean is fiscal year, right? Okay, just wanted to double check. Yeah, okay.
Next slide. And finally, as long as you have this information, but I want to extend also a thank you to Josh Moss. He's been our president for two years. You really don't see him. He's behind the scenes. He does a lot of policy work. All the policy you see from staff coming up, it starts with him. So thank you, Josh, for all your hard work. Unless you don't like it, then it... Then that was someone else. But thank you very much, Josh, and thank you, governing board members.
You're welcome. Wanted to acknowledge also you, Mr. Moss, and the contributions you've made. So thank you as you move on. Welcome, Ms. Roland, and so we'll look forward to seeing you in the next year that begins in August. So thank you and congratulations on your new position. And of course, Mr. DeVal, we're delighted that you'll continue to be with us, and thank you for the representation that you all bring. And to Ms. Manje. We also have appreciated her contribution, and good luck to her son tonight, right? And now, we're going to move to another celebratory piece, and that is we have two Emeritus Awards this evening. And we would like them to join with their college president, who's not here, but their representative is, correct? So let's start this evening with Dr. Mary McGlasson of Chandler Gilbert Community College. Would you both come to the podium?
If we can change the order, because I'm waiting for my dad to come.
Oh, certainly. So we'll switch. Is he on his way? Do we need to wait a little while longer? Okay, so let's then recognize Dr. Howard Speer.
Yes. Mr. Howard.
Well, okay.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Governing Board President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, colleagues, and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize two extraordinary residential faculty from Chandler Gilbert. The recommendation of Meritus Distinction is a lifelong designation of distinction that recognizes all of their phenomenal work. I will begin with Mr. Howard Speer. Spire. Mr. Howard Speer, a man ahead of his time, has been an active and dedicated devoted member of the mathematics faculty at Chandler Gilbert Community College for over 26 years. In that time, he has acued an infinite list of activities that speak to his tireless commitment to math education. In the 90s, Howard was an integral part of the development of the Maricopa Mathematic Modules. This innovative curriculum, perhaps more innovative than before its time, was designed to support learning by actively engaging students in real-world problem-solving and sense-making. Then, in the 2000s, Howard was a part of the team from Chandler Gilbert and South Mountain that created a student cohort program to increase success with the development of mathematics sequence. These courses provided learning environment that involved active, hands-on learning with cooperative activities, student projects, presentation, and service learning. Always a pioneer in many of Chandler Gilbert campus initiatives, Howard has always been a leader in training of other faculty and the use of collaborative learning, as well as online learning. Mr. Speer is a stellar example of what engaged faculty should be, serving on many committees, engaging with faculty association, providing leadership by launching new clubs with our student life, and representing the Mathematic Division at the Instructional Council and serving as division chair. So at this time, I want to congratulate, and I hope that you will join me in congratulating him on this distinction. Can we, can you do it? Do you want to say so?
I thank board members and all about this Emeritus Distinction Award. Wanted to do a brief history. My parents, when they were 10 and 13, came from Germany to the United States. They did not get, they didn't get a high school diploma or anything like that. I always bring that up because my brother, sister, and I all became math teachers. So you can see that's the type of upbringing type thing. It's not just knowing the culture. It's the upbringing. In the 70s, I was a high school math teacher. I coached soccer. I think they hired me for the coaching. I don't know. And I was an assistant principal for one year. And I was also, at the time during college, I joined the National Guard. I was in for 13 years, but then my wife wanted me to leave. So I talked about the 70s. Now, when I moved to Arizona, I was somewhat disappointed with the high school. There was no curriculum development or research, and that was my area. And so I became an engineer. For 11 years, I worked for Allied Single, which is Honeywell now, I believe, and McDonnell Douglas Helicopter, which is Boeing helicopter. I worked on the Apache and the C-17 in standardization and fluid systems. I have to tell you, I've never taken an engineering course in my life, and they hired me. But I had a background, obviously, in mathematics and computers. In the early 90s, I did, while I was still an engineer, I did adjunct teaching at Chandler Gilbert. Then in the mid 90s, I was hired as a resident teacher. And for the first two years, I actually went out to Williams, which was also ASU East was starting to move out there. So I taught Chandler Gilbert classes, but ASU, they didn't have a math teacher out there. So we created ASU classes for technical calculus. So I taught technical calculus for the ASU students. And my two, I have a lot of proud things. But in the year 2000, I created two online math classes. If you want to see the resistance that I got from my colleagues, it was tremendous. And I understood that. But I envisioned something that would change, especially with the technology changing. And I was right. It just moved on. And I think you agree that Chandler Gilbert has probably one of the best online interactive courses, communications, everything else, projects. You've never seen such things. And we're both proud of that. My other big accomplishment, which was brought up, is active learning, collaborative learning. And I started that right away with Melinda Rudaba. We did district sub-classes, and we did national conferences. And I only did collaborative learning in my classrooms. And that was a teaching for other teachers to understand that and get used to it. And basically, so that I did, and I retired a little more than a year and a half ago. And I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Speer, thank you for your many contributions to the students and the community. I bet your family's really proud of you.
Next, I would like to introduce to you...
Excuse me, just one moment, Dr. Hardy. Is your father here? Oh, there he is. Okay. Do you want to bring him over to sit near you first? Why don't you escort him over here, and then he'll be closer to you.
Slightly timed.
He must be really proud of you. You can give him a hug if you want. Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Hardy.
Okay, thank you. Next, I would like to introduce to you Dr. Mary McGlasson, who has made numerous contributions during her 25 years of service with Chandler Gilbert Community College. She began teaching as an adjunct faculty in 1996 and was subsequently hired as economics residential faculty in 1999. Her passion for teaching earned her the League of Innovation in the community colleges' John and Suzanne Roche Excellence Award in 2016. Throughout her career, she served in a variety of leadership and member roles on the college's instructional technology and e-learning committees. Additionally, she was instrumental in faculty development at Chandler Gilbert and with Maricopa at large. She developed and delivered well over 100 workshops and multiple summer institutes at Chandler Gilbert. District-wide, she presented at conference sessions for Maricopa Tech's Teaching and Learning with Technology Conference, Dialogue Days, and other district events. Since 2020, Dr. McGlasson served in the college's Center for Teaching and Learning and Assessment primarily by co-creating and facilitating workshops and training designed to prepare faculty to teach in a greater variety of instructional modalities. And it was all modalities, including online, live online, hybrid, and high-flex courses. One thing that was just so intriguing is her work that she shared with me about her YouTube channel. Literally, she has given me a list of all the colleges across everywhere that have used her materials, and I was like, that is distinction, and I just thank you for that. So she shared her YouTube channel, where she has created videos for her principals of economic students. Her economic videos have over 15 million views from an audience of over 200 countries. The content is available for free to students and teachers around the world. The videos have been incorporated into high schools, community colleges, university, open publication entities, and by a variety of states and countries in their public economic education effort. With that, I would just like to congratulate you for this recognition, so. I just wanted to thank everybody who is here tonight for basically my 26 years with Maricopa. I grew up with Maricopa. Chandler Gilbert grew as I grew professionally, and I learned so much. And even though I retired last August, I'm still working with Chandler Gilbert faculty, and we're still recording and creating new materials for students. So a lot of that came from the trainings that have been available to the faculty through Maricopa. So I had an excellent ride. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. McGlasson, and I want to congratulate again both you and Mr. Speer on your outstanding contributions to the district, and most importantly, to all the students that you've impacted over time. So thank you for that, and thank you, Dr. Hardy, for introducing them this evening. And I bet that dad is really proud of you. Now, I'd like to move aside to the chancellor's report. Dr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the board, members of CEC and faculty, staff, and guests that are with us. We've got a brief report. One is a quick legislative update. Last week, Governor Hobbs signed Senate Bill 1013, providing Maricopa with needed relief from expense limitations. For the next two fiscal years, I've never seen Kim smile so big before in my life. This result was the outcome of months-long legislative effort and I would say years-long legislative effort on some people's part. So I want to thank you all that helped move that piece of legislation, including our governing board members who are very active in that space as well. So we thank you all. It truly took a team effort to cross that finish line. Yesterday, some of our staff had the pleasure of giving a tour of Gateway's 18th Street campus to key staff in Governor Hobbs' administration. The tour was a huge success, and we are looking forward to working with Governor Hobbs and her team on several exciting endeavors. For enrollment, as was mentioned earlier by Lisa, that, you know, there's nearly 4,500 classes being taught this summer, and head count is up 5.9% over this time last year. So that's something to cheer up. For the fall, more exciting news. Head count is up 7.3% compared to this time last year. And we also measure attempted hours, and that's up 8%. So this would now be our third consecutive semester where we've had upward enrollment and making progress towards closing that gap where we lost between 15 and 18% of our students through the pandemic. So I want to congratulate the college administration, our recruiters, our advisors, our faculty. You've heard me say many, many times that we all play a role in recruitment and retention of our students, and I think people have taken that very seriously over the last few years. And I want to take a moment to thank Dr. Ernie Laura. This will be his last board meeting with us as the interim president of Glendale last October, November. So I called Dr. Laura and asked him if he would be willing to... So I called Dr. Laura and asked him if he would be willing to help us out. And I was able to do this with just the price of one lunch someday after this is all done. But I want to thank you, Dr. Laura. You've been a tremendous help. And we applaud you. And for those of you that may not know, that was after Dr. Laura retired after 40-plus years of service to Maricopa. So he is Maricopan for life. Thank you. And then we had a number of people who were getting up and congratulating one another and thanking one another for the support and leadership on our employee groups. And I want to extend my thank you and gratitude to Paul, to Camille and to Shannon, who have been leaders of those employee groups through some of our more difficult times. And thank you all very much. And I hope that you're finding the rest that you need now that you've been able to step aside a little bit, but look into our continued work together. So President Sullivan, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gonzalez. And again, congratulations to you, Dr. Laura, for your contributions to the system, to Glendale and to all the dedicated people in this district. Thank you for your leadership and all that. So one more round of applause for Dr. Lawrence. I'm going to move us now to citizens interim. And I remind everyone, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. And we will neither discuss nor take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda. I have one citizens interim speaking request. It's from Mrs. Pleasant. Ms. Pleasant, you're welcome to come to the podium this evening. And again, you know our standard operating procedures, three minutes. And glad to have you with us again today.
Good evening, Madam President, Chancellor Gonzalez, governing board members, CEC, family and friends, because we're all one family. My name is LaJuan Pleasant. I come to you once again. It's been four years and about three months since my awful situation that changed my life forever. There's been constant changes to our policies and procedures regarding our EEOC investigative. And that's wonderful. I'm so glad that they've gotten the EEO officers at each campus now not overwhelming their director. But one thing that hasn't changed, I'm so glad, the manner of governing board members. We will govern lawfully in a manner that is nonpartisan, with an emphasis on integrity and truthfulness in all of its activities and practices. The board will operate in always mindful of its civic trusteeship obligation to those who own the organization, the residents of Maricopa County. The board will conduct itself in a manner that complies with all relevant laws and regulations. The board will fulfill all of its legal and fiduciary responsibilities as required by state statutes, the Arizona Constitution and all state administrative rules. These include responsibilities such as approval of the budget, tuition fees, degrees, certificates and diplomas, graduation requirements, curriculum catalog policies and travel regulations and procedures upon recommendation from the chancellor. The board will cultivate a sense of group responsibility and shall work together harmoniously in pursuit of this obligation. The board will conduct its business in respectful and civil manner, always mindful of the Maricopa County Community College District's public image. Once again, it's been my pleasure to bring to your attention the injustice that has happened when you don't follow the policy and procedures. It affects people's lives. I don't know whether or not you know this or not. I wouldn't come here after four years. Okay? We're supposed to do things decently and in order. And when you know better, we're supposed to do better. And hopefully, this will be my last time having to approach you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pleasant. Folks, I'm now going to move us to the consent agenda. All items under this section of the agenda are consent matters unless they are removed from the consent agenda at this time. Before I go forward with that, I want to remind everyone that we do hold an agenda review two weeks prior to our board meetings. And during that time, we have an opportunity to go through each item that will be on the consent agenda. So board members are well-studied and thoughtful on those items that appear at our regular meeting for votes under this item. So say that because I know on occasion, folks think we just kind of burl through. But I do want to remind everyone that we have the opportunity to create, study, read the materials and are thoughtful when we make those votes. So as we move on, do any board members or the chancellor wish to remove any items? And before I move forward, I believe you do have one, Ms. Davis.
Yes, President Sullivan. I would like to remove item 17 from the consent agenda, having to do with workman's compensation.
Okay, so moved. We'll take that under consideration, under non-consent items first. So moving on then, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
President Sullivan, so moved, obviously minus the removed item, item 17.
Okay, thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in favor of approving consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item 17 being pulled. We have a second on that. So I'm just going to ask for a voice vote. So all those in favor, please vote by saying aye, and that includes you, Dr. Norene.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, then by a vote of six-zero with our student trustee also voting aye, the consent agenda passes without item 17. I'm now going to take us then, oh, I need to also ask. Folks, we have adopted therefore the version of the budgets for our charter schools. So tonight, before you leave, please remember to sign the documents that Elza is holding. And also, for those of you board members, I guess it's you, Dr. Norene, who's joining us virtually. Do you approve the use of your electronic signature on the adopted 2324 budgets for Gateway Early College High School and Phoenix College Prep Academy?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And that's duly noted by Ms. Masias as well. So thank you, board members. So now I'm going to move to the non-consent action items. And I'm going to ask for a motion to approve item 17 that was pulled from the consent agenda, to have a motion to support that.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. With a motion and a second, I'd like to move to discussion. Ms. Davis, would you like to tell us why you have asked for item 17 to be pulled to the non-consent action items?
I am currently under the care of workman's compensation for my hand injury that I got while we were in Washington DC right after I first started on the board, being catapulted down the sidewalk by Ms. Kelly.
Come on, you're throwing her under the bus on that one. Catapulted, that's quite a vision. She is telling the truth, however. She was catapulted. Anyway.
Not intentionally, I don't think.
Yeah, no, no. We don't think. Since Ms. Butler's not here to defend herself, I guess you can say whatever you want. We were there. Ms. Davis came back from a meeting out and she was holding her hand. And I also had had, as we know, my wrist injury. I was in a sling or something and she holds up her hand. And we said, so what happened? She goes, well, I was walking and pretty soon I wasn't. Well, anyway, it turns out it was broken.
Yes.
And so you have been receiving a workman's comp. Is there any other discussion on this motion? But then I'm going to call roll, noting that Ms. Davis is abstaining. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so I will call the vote. And I'll start with you, Mr. Burnett.
Voting to include the item. Approve it.
To approve the item, yes.
I vote aye.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, you're.
Abstain.
Thank you. Ms. Bitter Smith?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Thor.
Aye.
Dr. Norene?
Aye.
Thank you. My vote would also be aye. So student trustees voted yes. Five board members have voted aye. And one board member whose president has abstained. The motion carries on that vote. So thank you and good luck with the hand repair. Or wrist repair.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We're now going to move to the other action items. Authorization for Board Policy Committee Chair to make technical changes to board policies that fall in the following categories. A, grammatical errors. B, renumbering of policies due to deletion of a policy or relocation of a policy. C, elimination or substitution of language no longer current. Are there any questions, board members?
No.
Being none, is there a motion to authorize Board Policy Committee Chair, in this case, it's Dr. Linda Thor, to make technical changes to board policies that fall in the following categories as read? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Again, I'll just call for a vote, a board, a voice vote. Board members, do you have any discussion on this motion? Being none, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Any opposed? Being none, the motion carries six to zero. Board members and our student trustee has also voted aye. Linda, thank you very much for your contribution to do that. Excuse me, Dr. Thor. Sorry. Moving to the next item, second read and adoption of governing board policy changes to 3.2 Accountability of the chancellor and 3.4 Monitoring the chancellor's performance. Board members, are there any questions? Being none, is there a motion to adopt the amendments to those governing board policies as stated?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Same.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Again, I'll call for a voice vote on this. While, is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, the motion carries six board members aye and our student trustee also voting aye. Thank you very much for that also. Now we're moving to approval of Dr. Gonzalez's revised employment agreement. Is there a motion to approve the revised employment agreement for Dr. Gonzalez?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion? And I'll move that to you, Dr. Thor.
The action item that's before the board is a result of a discussion that took place in executive session during the chancellor's evaluation. The action item accomplishes two things. One, it allows the board to exercise an option that exists in Dr. Gonzalez's current contract, whereby the board can extend his contract by one year, maintaining it as a three-year contract. So the new termination date would be June 30th of 2026. The second part of the motion provides an option to address situations in which the chancellor may be losing substantial unused vacation.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, by a vote of six to zero and our student trustee also voting, the motion carries. Congratulations. Now we're moving to the next information item. First read of our governing board policy changes to 3.3 Delegation to the chancellor and 4.4 Board Planning and Agenda Preparation. Board members, do you have any question on the first read of these changes? Dr. Thor, do you have any comments or?
Yes.
This just continues bringing the board policies in line with the strategic plan and current language that we are using.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. So no further discussion from board members? Anyone else? Being none, we'll move then to employment and separations for April 15, 23 through May 12, 23. Board members, did you have any questions on this item? Being none, we'll move to the monitoring reports. Budget analysis report, Fund One, General Unrestrained and Restricted Fund for the 11 months ending 5/31/2023. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Being none, we're now going to move to the final comments for the evening from our board members. And Mr. Burnett, let's start with you. Do you have anything to report?
Well, it's been an enjoyable year. I'll keep it brief. It's been educational, amazing learning experience. And I'm looking forward to finally taking what I've learned this year and use it for next year. Hopefully, working with the Senate and getting them more involved in governing board meetings. I think it's important. It'd be phenomenal if we could have every student at Maricopa County attend one of these so they see what actually happens and what goes on. There's a lot of work, a lot of people doing an awful lot of work. And it's good to start recognizing a lot of the faces that you guys have worked together for a long time and board members come and go. But you guys are the reason that there's a Maricopa County Community College District. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Dr. Thor, do you have anything to report?
I have just one thing to report, and that's that last Thursday, I attended Rio's High School Equivalency Graduation that was held at the North Phoenix Baptist Church. And I very much appreciate that President Smith continues to invite me to that ceremony. This year was the 25th High School Equivalency Graduation that I have attended. And I have loved every one of them. It is just a really fabulous event. And I also want to thank everyone for all the great work that you did this year and wish you all a relaxing and enjoyable summer.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Dr. Norene, you're out there probably wanting to go surfing or something. Maybe not, it's too dark.
No, nothing to report. Just again, echo what Dr. Thor said and thank everybody for all the hard work and looking forward to another great year.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to add that something that I have been working on over the last month, it was brought to my attention wearing my other hat at Arizona State University, that we weren't seeing the kind of smooth transition in all areas that we were hoping for, for students from the Maricopa Community Colleges, being fully aware of the services available to them once they arrive at Arizona State University. And then a key moment in time when we share that information is through an evening orientation that's offered in the fall. And so I reached out to the chancellor to identify the appropriate contacts to see how we could improve attendance at that initial orientation event. And then my hope is that after we see how it goes this fall, we can think of other ways to ensure that Maricopa's students have a smooth transition to ASU. And perhaps these lessons will apply as Maricopa students transition to many other institutions and pathways. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I also attended the High School Equivalency Night at North Phoenix Baptist Church, which was amazing. I mean, all of our students work hard, but I just can't even, I have so much admiration for those students in particular. So thanks for inviting me. To all the rest of you, I want to thank you for wonderful, informative college tours that Kelly and I were allowed to attend with all of you this year. And it was great. And you do do a lot of hard work. And I was just amazed at everything we saw. And I am really looking forward to next year. Dr. Thor and company kind of lied to me when they told me that this was going to be easy and there wasn't much to it. But I really have enjoyed every minute of it. And I'm so glad that they found me, that Dr. Thor found me and gave me this wonderful opportunity. So thanks to all of you for everything that you did for Ms. Kelly and I. I'm sure she would thank you too if she were here.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Bitter Smith?
Thank you, President Sullivan. Dr. Gonzalez briefly mentioned Senate Bill 1013. And I would be remiss if I didn't talk about how significant that is for the future of this district and thank the teams from the district staff, as well as the PAC committee of the board and the rest of the board members for their very heavy lifting to make this a reality. The GR team, the PR team. Again, I mentioned the PAC and the board and Dr. Gonzalez's team. Again, I mentioned the PAC and the board and Dr. Gonzalez's team. But not to be missed is Ms. Grineo and her team, who probably are going to pass out if we didn't get this done. I can just want to say congratulations to all of us. Now, we have work ahead of us, but this gives us the opportunity to do it correctly, do it properly and bring a permanent solution to the district. So thank you for everyone for their hard efforts.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bittersmith. And I was also making note to say congratulations and thank you for the leadership that all of you provided regarding the E E L policy and practice. And yes, it was a lot of work. Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith, for leading our PAC committee and for all of you that made calls, whatever. Can't say that this is perfect without work, but it does give us a little bit of breathing room. And I think that's important as we look at other opportunities and other next steps. Community colleges remain probably the most important, well, maybe I better not say it that way. One of the most important education, higher learning education years for people. And without community colleges, so many people would not have opportunities. And also the benefit of just general learning and growth and investment in their futures. Or even learning to play a piano or speak French. And I just want to say again, thank you. With the breathing room, hopefully we can do more things. And at the same time tackle, how do we make this more permanent so we never have to look back, right? We can always look forward, so thank you. I want to say that there's been a lot to celebrate this past fiscal year. And as I'm looking at starting my vacation at the beginning of July, I'm just thinking of how hard all of you have worked. And I recognize and thank you, Ms. Macias, for bringing, excuse me, Lisa, for bringing this forward, that not all of you get to take a break. And I recognize that and we appreciate the hard work that you're going to continue to provide over the month of July as we wait to hit the ground running in August. Some of us, though, do get the opportunity to take that break. And for those of you who do, want to wish you safe and enjoyable opportunities to maybe sleep in a little later or catch some time with people that are very important to you. Use that time because I can guarantee you, when we all come back in August, the list is long. And I'm still writing mine, you're all part of it, so. Right, Dr. Gonzalez? Yeah, we were talking about that today. So anyway, again, thank you to all of you who keep this running. And to board members, I would like to say thank you for your leadership this past fiscal year. It's been a remarkable year with a lot of hard work. Every single one of you has made contributions, has attended meetings, have made yourself available around the clock. And it's our role as well that helps keep this district going, so to you as board members, thank you. And Dr. Gonzalez, I hope you find some time to regroup because you have a lot. You have a lot, that's all I have to say. Last, I'll close by saying I also was at the H S C graduations put on by Rio. They had, what was it, two hundred and some folks, two hundred and forty individuals who earned their G, their high school diploma through their GED work and test. It's extremely moving to see the different ages of people walk across the stage. There are some young folks who took advantage of different opportunities through the GED program. And there are some older people who have never thought that they would walk across the stage and someone would shake their hand and give them an education certificate. Hearing the stories and having the opportunity to witness the joy, the happiness and the sense of accomplishment that that piece of paper gave a hundred and some folks who were there was remarkable. And I think they're all candidates and they should all get a letter that says they've been accepted in Maricopa Community Colleges. Because by golly, they all have a future that they want to share with all of us and we need to recognize that. So thank you, Dr. Smith, for inviting me. And also thank you for all the hard work everyone does to see those folks be successful as well. All right, I've talked too long. It's ten to eight and now we need to depart for the fiscal year. Board, thank you again for your hard work. We'll be here together in August, yay, and we have a lot to do, so rest, rest well. So thank you. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty P M. tonight. Thank you, everyone.